We represent. Getting around the people, you gotta talk to them on how. Our local representatives, we can work together to fulfill the dreams of the citizens that we represent. And to regular, more routinely engage with each other. So that I can be sure, you can be sure, that the work that I am doing is actually supporting the work that you are doing and vice versa. Unfortunately, I don't feel like that has been the, uh, goal that we have made here in Albert County City. Um, but I don't think that is the place. But I know that if we can adopt that model of working together, the people will stand to benefit from both of the people who elected us, who will elect us to these jobs. Um, and I want to offer what I feel like is the key to success. And to me, that is staying close to people. Even if this call is not even by a meeting, if you stay close to the people, they are your future. They are that you're running for, whether you are accomplishing what you think you're accomplishing, whether your goals are aligned with your needs, whether or not you are actually as effective as you think you are. And with the relationship between the state representative and the local representative, from their budgetary standpoint about policies and employment, much of, because we already killed a politician, much of those folks who accomplish government policy often on, have to walk through the federal state legislature depending what it is, especially if it's not guaranteed charter. Often times, from a budgetary standpoint, the dollars that you are allocating are intrinsically linked to what this state does. So all of those goals that you set for, for public schools, uh, they get involved, uh, helps, helps, uh, uh, it actually go on, that's just wrong, but those things are tied together, you know? When they tie that, helping legislature fill the budget, I wanna make sure I'm out of that, for the outcome. There is things that you have, if our local power is possible, but that can't happen if we don't follow. That can't happen if we aren't working together, and if we're watching that, it dies altogether. And so the last thing I would say, because I know the whole thing is here, because you were not me. So if I were on screen in front of the crowd, I would simply say, people know where she puts off the role of home power. Often times, you can't be more important to your decision making because you don't know what your power is, because you don't know the rules in which you are obligated. You have to understand the rails of local governance, where you can charter, if there are policies that are insane, even if it's bound upon what you plan to do on behalf of others. So if you have none, I would encourage you to make sure to have registered charters, uh, to make sure who are policy carrying, to be, be generally clear, um, that you don't, if someone else is cutting you, that policy can control you and what you're doing. Uh, I would also just say that fear is a one phase to say what you plan on doing, going to citizens. But if you don't know how to navigate the national law and process of the government to actually make those things come true, um, you will hopefully have all the opportunity to work. And so I look forward to the conversations of our observing, virtual meetings. I appreciate the opportunity, uh, to briefly address you all, I wish you all the very best of luck and my very best. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
We so appreciate you taking your time to, um, pour into the running candidates, um, delegate air. You don't know how much we appreciate you, um, taking, doing that and pouring into them and sharing with them the sole responsibility and understanding the whole process to it all, not just the local, but the whole process to it all. So we thank you so much. Good luck with all the great ideas that you are having. Um, and we, we pray for you as well as our country. Thank you so much. Take care.
Bye bye.
Bye bye. All right, guys. So we've heard from delegate air, and I think that that was so important to have her be a part of, um, the decision making of what, what your jobs and responsibilities would be. Um, and I know we, as the citizens, we are so fired up about all the issues that's going on in Petersburg and where we are at, that sometimes we lose focus on what it's all going to require to make this natural change. Um, a lot of times, we don't want to operate out of anger, we don't want to operate out of frustration. Um, and I know that sometimes in politics, we have to throw some things at our previous candidates, um, and what all positions that they are holding, and yet I'm a firm believer in holding people accountable. I'm, I'm a firm believer in that. So if, if we feel like, and I know that there's a lot of citizens in the city of Petersburg are really having some major issues. And so that's why we are here today, um, to give the citizens the opportunity to speak to you concerning what makes you qualify. We've been in a state of emergency in the city of Petersburg for quite some time, and we have had, we have some major issues. And the people that we elected and put in office up until this very day, we now are questioning whether or not their hearts are true to what they say when they first sat behind this table. And so we wanna make sure that we, that not only your words, but we wanna make sure that your heart is lining up to what you're saying you want us to do by voting you and electing you as our new city council here in the city of Petersburg. So at this time, I'm going to turn the floor over, and I'm going to allow each candidate to talk a little bit, and then we're gonna turn it over to the citizens of Petersburg to let them ask you some questions and, um, what's on their heart and what they would like to see happen in the city of Petersburg and see what you can do to show us how you're gonna make that change. All right, so why don't we start, um, why don't we start with Marcus? You wanna start Marcus, you want to get that first one up, word first one up? Alrighty, so let us welcome Marcus Squires, he's running for, I see you guys in the corner, city council for fourth ward.
Hello, everybody. Uh, my name is Marcus Omar Squires. I'm a resident here in the city of Petersburg. I live in, uh, Walnut Hill, on Monticello Street. I'm also a public school teacher here in the city of Petersburg, and I teach at Walnut Hill Elementary School. Uh, I'm on the Historical Petersburg Foundation, and I'm also one of the directors, um, and on the Wilcox Watership Concerned Security here in the city of Petersburg. I moved to city, the city of Petersburg over four years ago, and I fell in love. I mean, Petersburg's one of the places where you can come here, you can buy a beautiful home, and, you know, there's a real sense of community here in Petersburg. I've never experienced a real community until I moved here to Petersburg. And when I first moved here, you know, I'm a runner, I'm active, so I was going on these ten mile runs around the city, and I saw glided structure after glided structure after glided structure. And I knew that this was illegal, I knew that there was something wrong. So I spurred a call to action here in the city of Petersburg. We had about fifty people come out to the Petersburg Public Library, and we demanded change. We demanded that the city start enforcing the code here in the city of Petersburg. Now, Delegate LaSherry's air was just on the phone list, she took part in that effort as well. Um, you know, she helped the city enact a new policy in the General Assembly, um, our council acted. And this was me as an everyday citizen who lived, or who still lives here in the city of Petersburg, actually demanding change and bringing change forward. I'm also trying to turn my neighborhood Walnut Hill into a historical district. Um, I'm trying to actually help the people here in Petersburg. This summer, um, I was on a late night run, and I was running by Carriage House Apartments, and I noticed the residents were all sitting outside on the sidewalk. And I asked them, "Why are you all sitting out on the sidewalk?" They told me there was no way to see, this is during a heat wave. These are senior citizens who don't have anybody else watching out for them. I demanded change, I called our federal representatives in Washington, I called code of compliance here in Petersburg, and we, we demanded action for these citizens of Petersburg. In regards to Fillmore Place, I was running as well, and I ran past Fillmore Place. And all of these citizens, during a COVID pandemic, none of them were wearing masks. They were all hanging out in close proximity, and the facility was just designated a COVID-19 hotspot. And I demanded action, I called our officials in Washington, because I wasn't getting any action from our local representatives here in Petersburg. Um, word got out to Delegate LaSherry's air, and, you know, they changed the policy through Governor Northam that week, and they no longer are going off of the good faith and will of directors of these facilities. And they are actually going into these facilities and looking out for the people here in Petersburg. Because far too long, our city has not had the proper representation. We have elected officials here in this city, even up in a state, who are trying to reopen the landfill in this city. The landfill is a form of environmental racism, and people are still backing these representatives who don't care about us. They're selling us out for pennies. And for the news, for the media, the press not to cover this, it's despicable. People in the city are suffering. My neighbor just died the other day here in the city of Petersburg, and there was no news coverage of that. How do their parents feel? How, how should we all take this when the media ignores what's going on in Petersburg? And it takes us, as citizen advocates here in the city, to actually go out and stand up for the people of Petersburg. I also wanna fix our schools here in Petersburg. But until we have a council that actually wants to meet with us, the school board, we're not gonna be able to make progress here in the city of Petersburg. Now, there are some other issues in the schools, but I'm a teacher, so I'm not allowed to, um, be vocal on all those issues. But our school board representatives, I hope that they're listening, and I hope that they come out, and they will present what some of the issues are and how they can move forward and fix them. Now, there are some issues that we all can take part in, we can all lobby, all of us. We can all lobby our elected officials enrichment at the federal government, and we can demand for more funding to be brought here to the city of Petersburg. Our school facilities are very old. I mean, some of them are seventy years old, and our students are still going to them. Now, they're not in awful condition, I teach at Walnut Hill, it's in good condition, but we could give our students more. They deserve more. These, these students, they are the future of America, and I want the best for them. I also think we need to, um, fix the issues with billing and collections. Now, I have experienced some personal issues. Um, most of them are not from your offices flowers. Um, and Brittany Flowers is here, she is another elected official here in the city of Petersburg. But I have had some issues with your office, and I've spoken to some other citizens, and they have had some issues with your offices. All right, and I have experienced issues with the Department of Billing and Collections here in the city of Petersburg, and I've spoken to thousands of residents here in the city of Petersburg, and they all agree. The issue with billing and collections is a major issue here in the city of Petersburg. The issue with billing and collections, it's, it's not just emerging from the actual bills which are coming to us as citizens and taxpayers and residents who are, you know, on the water system here. These issues also deal with customer service. Individuals are trying to call into the office, they're trying to leave a message, and the inbox is always full. Now, a lot of citizens in Petersburg, they do not have ample funds. They cannot afford to pay a six hundred dollar bill that just shows up, and their previous water bill was eighty, a hundred dollars, and now they have a six hundred dollar water bill, and they call in to try to seek some justice, to try to have their bill corrected. Nobody's answering the phones, the mailboxes are open, and they're at a loss. They don't know who to contact, they send emails, and nobody is responding. We have citizens in the city who are suffering. During a pandemic, our elected officials voted to turn off water. Disconnect citizens here in the city of Petersburg from a human right during a pandemic. These people are, we're, we're all in this together, these are our people, we're their people, we're here to look out for them, and they are suffering. And until our elected officials can come down from their ivory towers and talk to the people of Petersburg, we will continue to have these issues here in our city. I also wanna focus on transparency in Petersburg City Hall. Transparency is a major issue here in the city of Petersburg. When the Robert Bob group came to Petersburg, and they were working with Ms. Aretha Farrel Benavides, our city manager, they had requested that she set up an open government platform so that the citizens know what's going on in City Hall, so that the citizens can follow the check registry, so that the citizens can see where the money is going. And this current administration and council have locked the people out of Petersburg City Hall. If you wanna try to obtain any information, you have to pay hefty FOIA bills for information that should be readily available. They should be able to click file open, drag it over to the email, and send it to you. And they wanna charge you five hundred to a thousand dollars for basic information. It almost makes me believe that our current administration and city council, they're building a dangerous house of cards. And if we get in there, we see what's going on, they're afraid that we're gonna expose it. And some things need to be exposed. If we have a city that is being propped up, and we are not being able to have checks and balances, bank can all fall down, all this progress that's been made in the last three, four years, it can all be destroyed. We do have some people that have said that they were gonna speak out on some of this stuff. But I wanna know how much pull does Ms. Farrel Benavides have on our elected officials, on the city history of Petersburg? To the point where these individuals who work in City Hall, these people who are elected by us, the people, these individuals who work in City Hall are not willing to come out and come forward and let the people know what's going on? Aretha Farrel Benavides, she's not hiring people from Petersburg. She's hiring every, almost everybody's from Texas, friends, family, former colleagues. And we are continuing to see this cycle where there's no transparency in City Hall. We need to demand more from our elected officials, and I will also say that we need to upgrade city infrastructure and technology and improve the health of Petersburg and, sorry, I was speaking for a long time, I will.
Oh, no, you're fine, you're fine, but we gonna, we, we going to give you the opportunity to, um, thank Marcus, come on, let's hear Marcus. We appreciate, um, you know, and I, I'm just gonna say I thank you because there's a lot of information that you shared, um, that I wasn't into too, and so I thank you for sharing, thank you for investigating, and thank you for looking deeper into, um, what and where we stand in the city of Petersburg. So thank Marcus for, um, giving us all that wonderful information, we thank you. Now, we're gonna turn it over to Ward Four, Sam James. Did I do it James, what is it?
It's John.
John, why is it?
If you, if you wanna say Jane, make it easier for you, no worries.
So it's John?
It's John.
Okay. Oh, go ahead now. All right, we're, we're gonna turn it over to him. Come on, let's welcome Sam.
Um, first of all, I apologize, I don't wanna really stand, 'cause I don't wanna, um, talk at you, I wanna talk to you. So please forgive me for that, 'cause I figured we in, in an intimate room, I don't need to use a microphone. I think everybody can hear me, right? Am I correct? Okay. Most people, if you ask the question, why I'm, I'm running, first of all, I'm Sam John, running for Ward Four, uh, for the council seat in Ward Four. And as you heard, you just heard from Marcus Squires, who's also running for Ward Four, and we have also Mr. Charlie Cupber is running for Ward Four. I will say this, the reason why I ran is because I don't know how to say no. I tend to use the word yes more than I do no. Whether it's my Petersburg grandmothers that have asked me to run, or whether there's certain people in the city that asked me to run. It's not something I wanted to do, nor did I even wanna be bothered with, to be honest. But I know that when it's time to make a change, you gotta make a change. So it wasn't something I wanted to do, it's something that God wanted me to do, so I followed the rules, what God tell you. 'Cause you know, sometimes, I, I was trying to be John to run into the well, but I noticed as much as I tried to run into the well, I couldn't run from what I needed to do. During that time when I got into, uh, running for office, my main thing was, instead of always talking about the issues, let's talk about some solutions. So I went out and said, "You know what, let's do cleanup of Ward Four, just because, let's pick up some trash, let's get, let's get out the way, instead of always talking about things, let's just do something." And then in between that, I decided, say, "You know what, let's throw a free concert, free food, and also, you know, give away some school supplies," which I did at P, um, PK Acres in different areas in Petersburg. Also, it was like, you know what, besides doing that, let's get involved behind the scenes, 'cause I've been in behind the scenes when it comes to Petersburg, moving forward as much as I can. Been helping people get elected and stuff like that, so far, knock on wood, you know? Things didn't always turn out the way you wanted to. Some people I probably helped, I probably thought in my mind, "Why did I help them?" Because I realized when they got to the city, they probably didn't do what they supposed to do. And that's understandable, things happen. I never talk about things that I don't know about. I don't know what it is to be a councilman. I can talk to my faces, to my faces blow and say, "Oh, when I get into council, I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna do that." I never use the word "I," I always use the word "we," 'cause it takes four votes in council to make things happen. Period. First thing that we can do in Petersburg is take an assessment of what's going on in Petersburg, period. You can't get on council and not take an assessment. What are we doing in different departments? I don't believe no one should be looking at hundreds and change thousands in Petersburg. Ninety dollars should have been the cap. This is a small city of thirty-seven thousand people, we shouldn't be running around paying people a hundred and sixty, a hundred and seventy dollars like that. In between that, also, was saying to myself, "Well, how could I help make a change?" Then I realized, I'm everywhere in Petersburg. There's not a place where you jump out right now, all this can go, there's not a place in Petersburg where you take me, that they won't know my name and know what part I played in being involved in this city. Whether it's, like I said, whether it's Western, which is one of our, um, project areas that she was asking about in our city, uh, for what, we do have projects in Fort Fort, just in case. Uh, when you say projects, all my whole bunch of buildings together, we can live on top of each other, projects. I tell people I run because I'm hoping with your help, we can make a change. See, a lot of people come in and tell you, "Oh, I can make a change, I can do this, I can do that." I don't say that. Help me help you. Don't tell me you're gonna put me in office and you're not gonna help me help you. In other words, don't always say, "Hey, uh, you're not coming to council meeting, but you want everything to get done." You're not going to, to, to PTA me, but you want things to happen in the school system. Other areas, people are standing up and making changes in Petersburg, our future needs we now to help make it a change. Once you stop getting involved, then you realize it's not just council fault, it's your fault. 'Cause you're supposed to be involved in this city. 'Cause I know if those people involved in their city, makes changes. If those who not involved in their city, where you're not there when cops are being hired in your city, but you're mad about races. You don't even know who your chief police is, you don't know none of the police name, I know when I was growing up, you knew every police officer? Officer's name, oh, that's, that's Officer Johnson in your neighborhood. What happened to that, Petersburg? So again, Petersburg, gotta look in the mirror first before you judge any and everything. Is council correct? No, 'cause I don't tell anybody, I don't always see them negotiating with that business. When it comes to the water, it's all my checks are not being cashed six months later, all problems. But why we have these problems? We not doing a, 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 a thorough assessment of what's going on. We do a lot of hiring and firing. We know that. But no one's gonna do no hiring and firing until you get involved. So when I sit here, you sit here. It ain't just me sitting here by myself. Help me, please. And I'm a student to life, I don't know everything. But guess what I'm willing to do? I'm willing to listen. I'm willing to listen to you, but don't let me listen to you when you're not playing no part. Then I'm not listening to you, you're telling me, I become your doormat for your issues. I'm no one's doormat for your issues. I'm a helper. Everybody sitting here took a chance in their life and say, "I'm gonna run for office." And to be honest, whether they know it or not, I look at all of them, I'm a hard observer. 'Cause they took a chance, said, "I'm gonna run for office." Regardless, no matter what happened, how many signs been stolen, and I apologize, I came in with that issue, 'cause it bothered me, 'cause I just was driving by and just seeing half of the signs that I put up are being taken. Why they being taken? 'Cause someone wants to cheat. I don't like cheating. Don't tell me you wanna help the community and you're doing underhanded things. You disrespect me. Be honorable in whatever you're doing in life. 'Cause right about now, like I said, we can walk out of here right now. I dare you to pick a spot in Petersburg and say, "Come on, let's go," and see if they don't know my name, I guarantee they do. But everybody wanna talk about how they involved in the city and they doing this and doing that. You can take me to the hardest part of people, and I guarantee, they're gonna say, "Oh, that's Sam, a kid when they pulled me to the side." And, well, actually, he happened to be riding his little bike and came by, and when he came by, he stopped for me, he looked at me. He said, "You running for office?" I said, "Yes." He said, "He be out here with us." Meaning I be in the streets with them. I said, "Yes." He says, "If that means I can run for office too." I said, "Yes, you can, anytime you ready." I don't even know if I just spoke to the next Obama, but I was, I was happy to say that, "Yes, you can." Win or lose or draw, this campaign to me is a beautiful thing. There's more people involved young right now in Petersburg because of the fact of what's, of what's happening, who's running. Let's be honest. There's changes already here. Any kid right now, you talk in the streets, is gonna know who the candidates are right now. Whether people wanna like me or don't like me, at least I got the kids involved. Then the kids go to eighteen plus, fifteen, sixteen, whatever, if you say, "Who's running for office?" They would maybe gonna know the name. Back then, they wouldn't even know the name. You know why they know now? 'Cause they know somebody who they know and trust, that they've been seeing for a while is now running. I've been to them, I was going, I ain't doing for nobody here but for them, for our future. So again, if you ask me the right question, I hope to give you the right answer. But do me a major, major favor, again, help me help you. Don't point the finger at me like, "Oh, when you get into council, you gonna do this, you gonna do that, you gonna do this." Don't point the finger, 'cause mixing all you're doing is to point fingers. And I'm gonna tell you, all right, yes, but come on, you coming with me, right? 'Cause we, 'cause I represent you, and if I represent you, do you represent me? So we all gonna run and make council, become a change, right? Or you gonna stand here and just tell me run? Which one we gonna do? So again, I'm running for Ward Four. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shout out to Senator Bob, hey, Senator Bob, like, you gonna be my favorite person, right?
Thank you, Sam, we appreciate it. Come on, let's give Sam another clap.
Thank you.
Thank you for your passion.
That's my thing.
Um, for the city of Petersburg, and, um, we appreciate you stepping to the plate to run as one of our city councils. We do appreciate your desire. Um, we're gonna turn it over to, um, Patrick, and let's have a little word with Patrick.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So my name is Patrick Ingram, I'll just, oh, I'm sorry. It's loud, okay, it doesn't matter, I can pretend. Look, my hat's not gonna push, it's sounding like a monkey, there you go, my brother. Hello, okay, so my name is Patrick Ingram, um, I'm running as a candidate to represent Ward Six here in Petersburg, Virginia. You know, just listening to the first two, one of the things that I kind of summarized in my mind is that it takes nerve. It takes nerve to put yourself in a vulnerable position to run for office. And so I appreciate the gentlemen that are working today as well as the incumbents that are running. It's a part of the democratic process. You know, I, I wanna thank Pastor Bob and the New Divine Worship Center for hosting an event like this. This is what we need, we need spaces where we can have realistic conversations and have your representation be visible, and take the heat, whether it be good or bad. You know, I moved to Petersburg a year ago, and I made the decision to start a family. But since being here, we began to see, my spouse and I, problems. And they're not terrible problems, they can't see solutions. So, but the starting of our campaign began with what I'm here to do today, is to listen, engage in impactful and meaningful dialogue, and tell me what we have in terms of plans to address these issues. But by being in, starting in May and having conversations with individuals in Ward Six, and by also looking at the data, census data, community need assessments, data by the Health Department, we were able to discover that there are multiple things that need to be addressed, but it all drives down to this. Community, schools and education, water, support services for our most vulnerable members of our city, and action. That's what that's about, that's what it's about. Let me break it down for you, I wrote some things down before coming in here today. Ward Six has some of the poorest health outcomes in the city of Petersburg. We are a food desert, we have folks with multiple comorbidities, diabetes, uh, obesity, HIV. We have folks that don't have access to clean and accessible water, affordable water. Folks rely on one vehicle for transportation, and the education level's not there. Ward Six has four thousand three hundred and thirty-two people. You know, the city of Petersburg has thirty-one thousand five hundred and forty-six people, based off of the two thousand nineteen census, uh, data pool. Now, the median household income in this city is thirty-six thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars. Our city manager makes almost five times that amount. We have twenty-five point eight, a quarter of this community, that is impoverished, in poverty. We have eighty-one percent that our high school graduates are higher. We have a median housing value of a hundred and eight thousand two hundred dollars. And we have sixty-five percent of households that have broadband internet subscription. Now, I don't know about you, but if you're paying the city manager and her administration, that are not from Petersburg, a hundred and eight thousand dollars, when do you expect better outcomes?
Yes.
When do you expect ninety-five to a hundred percent of our community to have at least a high school education? Would you expect for the median household income, the average income that people make, to be more than thirty-six thousand? Let me just break it down for you as perspective. Hampton, Virginia, where I'm from, has a population of a hundred and thirty-four thousand five hundred and ten people. Now, their city manager makes a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars and seventy-eight cents a year. Let me tell you about their outcomes. Their median income is fifty-four thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. Ninety-one percent of the population of Hampton have a high school, a high school diploma or higher. Eighty point three percent of households have broadband. Fifteen point eight percent are in poverty. I come here with the facts. This is what this campaign, our campaign is about. Facts, the benefits of electing us, knowing that we know the data. We've had conversations with the community. It's not about, again, being negative. It's about bringing the problems to the forefront and creating cost-effective, realistic solutions. But it also requires, like we're doing today, to come out of our silos, to have these necessary conversations. I appreciate our constitutional office being here. I cr- I appreciate our faith-based leaders and our community leaders being present. I appreciate the media behind this Petersburg solution, being here, providing us to be accountable for our work, because guess what? It's gonna be on Twitter and it's being recorded. I appreciate that. But we must come together to work together. Whether I like you or not, at the end of the day, the reality is, is that we're going to be on council and be forced to work with people we don't necessarily see eye to eye with.
That's right.
To work with people that the community may not like, but to get stuff done, we have to meet each other where we're at.
That's right.
Now, I work for the Virginia Department of Health and the Department of Disease Prevention and within epidemiology as a disease and prevention specialist. One of the things I know in my role is that you have to meet people where they're at, you have to be empathetic, you have to listen, you have to understand what's going on. We can sit here and bicker, and we can sit here and have long dialogues, but what I'm here to do is to listen, answer your questions, tell you about what we're doing. But more importantly, for y'all to realize that the end goal is to begin, begin the process to make change. That's what this is about. That's why I know my colleagues left to right to me are here. But you have to spread the word. Early voting has started, absentee voting has started. You have to spread the word. You have to understand that not everybody is privileged like we are in this room. You have to understand that, again, not everybody is on the higher end of the socioeconomic spectrum. We have to take care of our community. And one of the things all of us brothers know on this stage is that we are our brothers and our sisters deeper. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Patrick. Thank you, Patrick, for sharing with compassion, understanding, and information. At this time, we're gonna turn it over to Marlo Jones, who is running for Ward Six. Right, to Ward Two, which is my ward, okay.
How are you guys doing? My name is Marlo Jones, and I'm a candidate for Ward Two City Council. Before I get started, I give thanks to my God, who's the author of my life and everything that happens in it, and authority over my decisions. I'm here because of him, for the third time. The third time running for city council. People, we're at a time today like no other you've ever seen. Quite frankly, it's like any other. This minute is nothing like the minute at the same time yesterday, right? However, we have been, and I've been witnessing, people doing the same thing at the same time, getting the same results. And that's election time. I ran two, two times, twice. Each time was better than the other. Each time I learned from last time. Each time I've grow, I've grown, I've matured, I've been refocused, reconnected, revived. And that brings me to this time today. I don't just wanna be a councilman for Petersburg. I've already been a councilman for Petersburg. From the time I stepped foot out of my house as a daddy at thirteen years old, I was a councilman of Petersburg still, is when I'm claiming it right now. Alright. So what I'm saying that because there's been people who ran for council every year that I've run. They run and they run away. But one thing you'll see, I ran, I'm back. I ran, and I'm back. Sometimes with a giant, you gotta beat that giant. You gotta keep punching that giant to beat it down, to get where you need to be at. A city council is a group of duly elected officials who serve as a legislative body for their city. In addition, proposing, passing, and ratifying laws and ordinances. City council also manages budgets. And they're supposed to even investigate their own internal departments. That's not happening. That's not happening at all. These are the things that need to be addressed. And as your councilman, because I already claim it, as your councilman, I'm not here, what few of the most important words that a councilman should say for having this memory bank is, I don't understand. Can you help? Because I don't know it all. I already know this. But I know there's people in this room that know what I don't know. And I know, I may know some things that people in this room don't know. And together, that's how we make things happen. As your councilman. We talk about the signs and things of that nature here in the city. And I was told, because I made a communication down to him, I was doing that the signs were, um, some of them are in the city's rattle. So to define the city's rattle, really, is that's property that the city owns. And if I'm wrong, somebody can prove it. And it gotta be a few feet from the curage. Um, I think three to ten feet from the curage. And, and it's for the city to maintain the sewage and the grass and all of that stuff, but they put so much energy in the sign. So much energy in the sign. And you can go out here right now today and go on any rattle, and you'll see grass growing up past your sewer. But they put that energy and take it in the signs, and put it in the truck, and throw it away and tell us we can go dumpster die. That's what a lot of us want.
Oh, no, something else been stolen.
Well, oh, no. That's what a lot of us want. Now, now, listen. My thing about these signs is this, I didn't pay for them signs for my money at all. Those signs were paid for by people who donated money to me. So the city is still in a way taking from the people. We got to put that same energy that we use our signs, that bothers nobody, but the sewer's blocked up with grass and all that stuff, you got your flooding going on. You got your, your backed up pipes and everything like that going on. But we want to put all this effort into taking signs because they're in somebody's way. Or maybe because there's people that's already on council who's using or misusing these people who's in these apartments to say, hey, get these out of here. You know, and they're doing that thing like that. I'm running for city council. Let's get a movement going. It's not just me. There's a movement coming with me and happening. I'm just here to soil this soil and plant some seeds. There's other people coming right by me. I'm not gonna make this a lifetime thing in this seat. I wanna get that soil right for the next season to be built, you know? That's what I wanna do. But it's not just what I wanna do, it's what the people. And the people, it may appear that the people don't want change. They just so tired of the bull crap, and they know. They're tired of left and right, you know? This city do more work for the people at election time than they do anytime during the year. Now, they just had a groundbreaking ceremony for the St. Andrew Street Bridge. That ground already been broke. It been broke for years. You know? Yeah, we need a shovel for the, for the, uh, brown render. It's already been broke. Fix it. Should have been fixed it. All of a sudden, election time, who wanna do things for you? Last but not least, I'm not about, I don't want anybody who's watching or listening to be concerned about the signs. I'm not getting into a sign about a day with anybody. That's a distraction.
That's right.
I need to stay focused on the people in the community. I got a lot of areas to cover, and if they move my signs, it'll be, I don't wanna put out there. You know, and, 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 and guess what? If they move them, then I'm riding with them. They don't like me, I'm riding right in the seat with them. I'll wait till they throw them away. You know? But I wanna say to you guys, thank you. I'm here for you. I've always been here for you. And I always will be here for you, for everybody that's listening, for my team, for everybody. You know, I'm not gonna know all the answers. That's why you got more than one mind up there on that council. You know, there's somebody that specializes in everything, and it's not only council, it's out of the community. That's where your answers are at. That's where you answer to your problems I have right there. Um, I gotta, I'm not, I'm not pissing up because she's here, but I gotta say, one of the best-run departments in the city has to come in here and use office. I gotta say that because I personally wrote this, this to office to make sure money come into the city, make sure people are doing what they're supposed to do. When I was a fire marshal here, I personally witnessed that. So that's not, not, not that I'm making up, but, um, I wanna say thanks again, Brandy, Buck, Linda. Tell everybody, I know everybody's name personally, and I would take my time to get your questions going. Thank y'all again.
Thank you, Marlo. As he stated before, he, he ran this race right here for the last three years, and we thank you for not giving up. Now, at this time, we're going to turn it over to you, the community. These, these gentlemen has come out and they have shared with you who they are and some of the things that they plan on doing for the city. But then there's some personal things that we as a community has to deal with and face every day. And that has been weighing us. And right as I heard some of you say previously, this has been a struggle for the community. And what we don't want for the city to do is to give up. We don't want our communities to give up. We don't want them to get tired of running around voting. There is so many people, guys, believe it or not, within just this week, I've spoken to anywhere from twenty-five to thirty people that, as a matter of fact, that even shared it with delegate air, that don't even think that they're gonna even vote. Marlo said it, or someone, or Patrick, somebody said it earlier. People have gotten to the mindset that they feel like it's just a waste of time. And just like it rained today. And so people don't wanna get up and push and press and make a sacrifice for that particular change because they have lost the zeal. And they don't feel like change is going to come. One of the things I liked, um, I think it was Sam that said, um, that how the youth and the younger adults are more involved and more active as they have ever been in our generation. So I ask that you plead with them, stay on top of them, to make sure, because they want change, but they have to understand that the policies and the procedures of getting these changes done, they gonna have to get out and vote. They gonna have to get out there and put that foot forward. So I want, um, I wanna thank you guys for coming out and sharing with us what you plan on doing. But then, we as a community, we still have some questions because after all four of you candidates, neither one of you answered what's on my heart. And I see all your passion for what you're doing, all the, um, and I, and I believe that, um, you all, I like what Marlo said too, how everybody's different. And so everybody brings something sweet to the table. Wisdom, knowledge, um, insight. So before I turn it over to them, can I be the first one to ask the first question to the group, to the running candidates? What are your intentions? What are your plans with dealing with the balance in our city? What are your plans? What do you have in place? When you got a community in a city, and I heard Patrick give a exact amount, thank you for sharing that, because I thought we were still at thirty-two. So we, we done dropped down a little bit. We done dropped down some. And we're losing lives. And whether we lose three lives, um, a year or one life a year, balance in this city has been a major issue. Um, Marcus, it's been a major issue. It's been a major concern. And as of just this week, I was over on Whip Street with families in a community, and I watched a twenty-three-year-old boy lay out in the street, shot not once, but several, multiple times. Um, and I watched grandparents screaming, and I watched mothers screaming, and I was at home, and I was actually at work, and I saw it on social media, so I jumped in my vehicle and I went to the scene. Most disappointing, I did not see not one of my city councils, not one of my city leaders there in that particular ward. I don't know which ward that is. Whip Street, anybody know? Ward five. Somebody from our city council, somebody in from the city, um, leadership, should have been there to comfort that ward. And the reason why I begin to ask this question, that if you are chosen as a council and something happens in your ward, can you walk on sight and the people know who you are?
Facts. Now we talking, good.
Do they know who you are? Because I don't know a whole lot of, I mean, I'd have been here for over twenty-some years now. So when I got to that particular Whip Street, which I never had to really spend a lot of time in that, um, with doing the evangelistic work that I do, so it was a lot of faces that I didn't know, but there were people that immediately knew who I was. And I didn't know who they were. So I say this to my running candidates. If trouble hits in your ward, are you gonna remain in the bed? Or are you gonna get up and go to the city? So I wanna know from my four runner candidates, what are your plans? What are your visions? What do you have implemented to help change the death rate here in our city? And I'll turn it over to Marcus.
So I, I did witness when it did occur. Um, uh, but, you know, I'm a teacher. I have twenty students in my class. I can't just drop everything and abandon twenty students. Um, you know, crime, it's a really tragic thing when it occurs here in the city. I have been advocating for more funding to be placed in the Witness Protection Program here in Petersburg. I want to look at changing the policy in the Police Department. One of our residents here in the fourth ward, he witnessed a crime. And almost every week, they're outside of his house with a sawed-off shotgun. He has it on camera. He reports it to the Police Department. He reports it to the police department here in Petersburg, and their response is, let us know if they come inside. We have people in the city of Petersburg who are living in fear. They are taxpayers. They are people just like us, living in fear. And the only response from our department is, let us know if they come inside. We need to look at the policy here in the city of Petersburg. We need to make sure that people have witnessed the crime. People who have seen something can be able to say something, cuz they know that they're gonna be, there's gonna be funding there to help them. They are gonna know that someone's gonna be there to protect them. And not just let them know, let us know if they come inside. We also need to focus on lighting here in the city of Petersburg. So I've advocated for, uh, LED lights to be implemented, an LED upgrade to be implemented in the city. Over ten years, it would save our city over a million dollars in electrical, uh, bills and fees. So we have a, an opportunity to save money. We also have an opportunity to illuminate our streets. You know, bright streets can also deduct our, it can diminish crime, because if you can see what they're doing, they won't be able to do it too freely, because they will have to be worried about being on camera, they're gonna have to worry that someone's gonna call them in. They're gonna know that there isn't a dark place to hide. And we're gonna be saving a million dollars. So it's a win-win situation for the taxpayers here in the city of Petersburg. The police department recently, who's stated by Chief Miller, they have become, they finally have become an accredited police force. The first time, and according to Chief Miller, in Petersburg's history. Since we are now an accredited police force, we can now go out and apply for additional grants and funding opportunities from the federal government to implement a gun, uh, gunshot tracking system, to possibly implement new security cameras at major intersections. We have a critical public safety issue here in the city of Petersburg, and the data packs, the metrics, they back it. It's not just the people of Petersburg highlighting a certain event. This is a constant here in the city of Petersburg. And one way that we can also battle this violence, this darkness, which is penetrating our city, we can invest in our educational system here in Petersburg. We can look at more technical schools, trade schools. Bring our children to the forefront. We can set a model. We can be a beacon of change here in the city of Petersburg. We can have our elected officials in Washington, in Richmond, and even in Petersburg lobbying for a new technical or vocational school to be put here in Petersburg. They put the governor's school in Petersburg for the arts. Why not a vocational school here in Petersburg for the people of Petersburg? Now again, I will say, we do need to really focus on building the budget or putting more funds into the Witness Protection Programs here in the city of Petersburg, and we need to have more people checking in on our detectives. One of my good friend's son was murdered last year here in the city of Petersburg. And the officer who was supposed to be investigating went on holiday. The gunshot, uh, ballistics were sent to Richmond too late. The person who they suspected of partaking in the crime made a YouTube video about it. They sent the YouTube video to the investigators. The investigators never watched it. Word was getting around that this video was out, and then it was deleted. And then when the investigators finally got around to it, we're talking about a life and death situation, when the investigators finally got around to it, it was deleted. We still don't know who killed her son. It's a cold case, and we have too many here in Petersburg, and we need to ensure that our detectives are doing their job. We pay them, I'm, I'm getting a little fired up.
Let's say, get fired up.
Thank you.
Fired up. Get fired up. Sam, can we hear from you concerning, um, the violence here in our city?
Yes, ma'am. I think when it comes to Petersburg, instead of we talking about violence, we just talking about lighting. Just like she was just talking about incident. You know, I remember being in Fort Ford one day. And as I was in Fort Ford, we was in the pool hall. Being covered. You know, a lot of people like to say, oh, you assault yourself with the streets and stuff, but yeah, you want change in the streets, but you're not in the streets. So how you expect you're gonna change? Cuz sometimes these, everybody has a story, and all these stories matter. If all stories mattered, then you don't really know what happened, what's the cause of it, just like that young man. You talking about laying in the ground. I get a phone call, I know, okay, his cousin killed him. And then he died over female. See, how you gonna know what's going on in the street, what happened, but I get to a phone call to say, what happened? See the difference? The difference is, I'm in the streets, seeing what it is. I talk to people, just like the day I sat in, in Fort Ford in the pool hall. A, a, a white young lady happened to be drinking. She turned around, I don't know what she said to somebody, she turned around, mama, she's the only white woman there, she called the guy, nigger. The crowd, and this is when, uh, was it Beyonce Taylor or somebody had just got killed? People were very emotional. Streets is in there, they very emotional. I had to grab this white lady and pull her to the side. You know how hard it took me to stop the streets from trying to hurt her? But they respect me enough to say, nah. I'm told to cool out, they gonna cool out. I say, I know I'm running for my, like, office. If y'all want me to represent y'all, how they gonna have me represent y'all? If y'all gonna turn around, hurt this lady in Ward Four, this is my ward. What are we doing? In the street, pause for me. But Thirty-six had a problem beefing with acres. Oh yeah, now we talking real business in the streets. Who went to Thirty-six in the middle of the project and sitting in Crow Town like, yo, you know we got to put a pause to this? You can't tell people what to do, and we don't have no programs for the kids. Nothing for them to do. And they wanna talk about why they in the streets violent. They can get, I know kids who can get guns fast, and they can get a program in, in Petersburg. So when you talking about, oh, we need to make a change, how are we gonna change the violence? Well, get involved. That's how you change the violence. If you don't get involved, you can't change the violence. Don't be sitting there behind, uh, 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 social media and wanna kick Petersburg back in. All talking negative Petersburg, but yeah, you not in the streets to help out Petersburg. Again, we talking about changing the violence and give kids something to do. I know fifteen-year-olds got more guns than average adults. Why is a fifteen-year-old sitting there with nothing but guns in their hands, talking about, this is what they gonna do next in Petersburg? And here's what I'm doing. I'm talking to a fifteen-year-old, telling him, look, we need to stop buying guns. How you tell a fifteen-year-old stop buying guns, and he don't have nothing else to do? Nothing else to do. Who falls that? The kids or the adults? Cuz you were there before them. You were there before them. So when you complain about Petersburg and youth, and why they killing each other, complain to yourself. Cuz at the end of the day, when I was growing up, we had programs where a truck would come by and bring food outside for the kids. Half these kids is wearing drugs, no food, and they stunk. Their parents are young, so their parents is part of a, of a crack generation. I'm first generation crack man. To be honest. I'm forty-eight, so I'm a long, high on crack in our neighborhood. And please don't tell me the kids was the one who brought the crack there, and please don't tell me the kids was the one who brought the guns there. I never, I never seen a gun been manufactured a day in my life. I never seen crack been manufactured a day in my life, but I know it's in the hood. So the problem is a little bigger than the children. And if you notice, before crime began, what they do, they shut down all social programs. Since they been doing this. So what part are we gonna play to change that? Don't ask the kids to do it to them, with what you're not gonna do for them. You can't ask them for change.
Can I ask you though? I know what the community needs to do. But what part are you gonna do to help change?
I just told you. Did you reiterate? Pardon me, ma'am.
Okay, go ahead.
Let me reiterate, reiterate. In order to change crime, you gotta be involved. Meaning that, you gotta sit with these kids and show them another direction. See, that's one of my platforms. Bridging the gap between older generation and younger generation. They the age of information, but they don't have no direction. What we gonna get out of the direction and wisdom from? Our older generations, the only one can teach us how to get it right. So when you ask me what I'm doing, I'm already inside, running around, trying my best to tell them, look, put the guns down. Let's do something else. A lot of time, you know what I do with them? Come on, let's go sit down. Do you know it's kids in Petersburg that have snatched up bad kids and say, yo, come on, let's go campaigning with them? They gonna knock on doors with them. That's one day of them without no guns in their hand. Knocking on doors, boom, boom, boom. They looking at me like, man, I never thought, hold up. But you know what I do after that? What restaurant you wanna eat? Do you know how, there have been kids who were at Sack Restaurants, that ain't never sat in a restaurant, and they like, whoa. And yet you wanna complain about why they, they're violent? Like, I always wanted to eat at Long Street. I always, yo, you never ate here before? Nobody have brought you here? Nah, nobody ever sat with me. No one ever sat with me, had dinner or lunch before. In his life. Come on, y'all. You know what? I've been almost off fifteen. I am new kids. From North New Jersey, same place, uh, Delegate Eric's from. Again, streets of Jersey, terrible. But gun violence is nothing but gun violence. People killing each other in broad daylight, no problem. I'm from Littlewood, which is probably one of the worst sort of injuries. And what I learned from that? Don't talk gals, talk tourists. I had to sign my mother off for life support at eighteen. I've been facing the streets since then, and today for me to sit here and say I'm running for office, I'm a product of those kids. I am one of them. So when you ask me what I'm doing, I'm one of them. I'm doing what I, what someone did for me. Sacked me down and said, hey, there's something better you could do. And they ain't just sit there and show me. They showed me by being there with me. They came in the projects. They say, hey, young man, come here for me, let me talk to you. I respect that. You gonna come, you leave, you get out your car with your fancy suit or whatever situation your, your, your social, um, status is, and you get out to come meet me where I'm at? A friend of mine always, a friend of mine says, uh, recently to me, well, I meet you where you at? And I like that. To be honest, that's what I do in the streets. I meet them where they at. If you, to answer the question, this is what I do. I meet them where they at. Thank you.
Turn to no Patrick, will you be willing to answer that question for me?
Yeah, well, I'll start off with your, your direct question. I will be there. And I'm not perfect. I'm not, um, I'm not an individual that is going to make a promise that I know I will consistently be able to keep. But what I can tell you and the rest of the folks that are here and watching on social media, or may watch later, is that I will be there. If there is, uh, uh, a violent situation, if there is a media event that happens, I will be there. And you know, condolences go out to the lives that have been lost, not just one. It's more than one. You know, last year, we saw a record-breaking number of homicides in our city. And it's a profound mistake that our city manager and city council did not pull Chief Miller accountable and come up with solutions to the problem. Well, I'll tell you, the solutions to the problem is they are systemic. The fact that we have no community centers for young people to, to congregate and be in the same space. We talked about LED lighting. Well, you know, the motion was to start that project in Old Town. That lighting should have been distributed, and it should be distributed where it's needed the most, the heights. Public housing, Out and Board Seven, where there's been media events because of violent crimes. That's where it should be at. That's what we should be investing in. You know, we can talk about the data all day long. But for the folks that were here, not even across the street, we were out there that night talking, enjoying ourselves, when we heard shots ringing out at a community space, a community event. I live in Petersburg. I can't say that for everybody. But what I can tell you is that, and my, 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 my campaign manager is here, and she's known, we have had bullets fly across the streets. We've heard them. We've ducked for cover. We experienced that. But it's about holding leadership accountable to create tangible and measurable change. It's about truly investing in our kids. It's about, for me, being a mentor, being present, being visible. We don't see that in every leader. It's about working to create solutions. Yes, the police department wasn't credited, but I've done three ride-alongs with the police department. And it's not just an output, it's input. Officers are tired. They are overworked. They don't get the necessary training and skills, nor leadership that they need. Right now, they're running in an emergency situation because they are low on staff. We are not investing in, in the well-being of our officers. The city of Petersburg is a training ground. Where people are hired, they learn a skill, they get a certification, and they back. We have to address that, because if we can pay the city manager a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, we can invest in our hard-working men, women, and folk in this city. That's what it's about. It's about investing in our children by giving them opportunities, like again, Hampton, Virginia offered police cadets, police explorers, where they're teaching you the skills and getting you acclimated what law enforcement is about. But you get to learn your community. You get to learn how to de-escalate problems without excessive force or gun. So when you do get promoted to, and have the ability and the blessing to go to become a police officer, you know what you need to do. You know your neighbors, and we need to invest in the people of the city. How many times do we get headhunters to go out and find people, find qualified individuals outside the city when they're right here? Where they have the skills and the attributes and the drive to be community, community, functional members of the community? We have to do that. But it's about holding leadership accountable. And what I can tell you as a, as a city council member is that I'll do that. That's what it's about. It's about prioritization of our needs. We need accredited schools and vocational programs. We need after-school activities and solid mentorship. I would love to bring a young person to sit alongside me as we continue, if, cuz we're gonna claim it, like Marlo said, if when we win, I want a young person to walk beside me and walk in my shoes. I want them to sit on council with me and put out a motion.
There you go.
Because guess what? It requires them to take ownership of that choice. We need our young people engaged. And yes, they are. Sam is right, they've been engaged. But we have to give them the platform to be present. We have to give them the platform to listen to them. We have to give them the necessary investment. There is no reason, and I know you can't go into this, but there is no reason for our schools to look like battlegrounds. There is no reason that we are not investing appropriately in our children's future in education. There's no excuse. But again, Delegate Eric said it so eloquently that we have to work with every stakeholder, municipal, state, federal. I'm willing to bring that to the table. You have by commitment. It's not about who's right and who's wrong. It's about what can we do to make sure that we are addressing the needs of every constituent every time. Even if you didn't vote, you still may have a need. It's my obligation to take care. That's what this is about. Again, it's about addressing the need to improve our law enforcement. But it's about, again, we got accredited, it's about investing. Investing in a mental health professional who's at the police department that can assess their mental health and their tolerance if they're taking one of these. Because you don't understand, these officers get a call, they find a dead body, then they're going over to a shooting, and then they're going over to deal with a, a domestic situation. How difficult is that for even you or I to deal with that? But then you're putting that into the hands of the officer. We have to not necessarily defund the police, but reappropriate funding when it comes to how we police. Because Petersburg is blessed to have great relationships with their officers and their community, but we can make it better. But it's, it's about having committees. Having citizen involvement in that process. We don't have enough of that. We don't. And that's a profound mistake. We have to involve the community in that process. As your council member, that's my goal. That's my promise to you, Pastor Bond, everybody in this room, to be there. I may not be able to do every time. We have lives. This is a part-time position, but because it means so much to me, because I've seen our elderly and vulnerable people who have rocks thrown at their houses and glass breaking, and they can't repair it anymore, because every time they repair it, it breaks down again. To have individuals in this city that have to hear and see gunshots every night to the point where you can't distinguish if it's fireworks or not, that's a problem. And our leadership has not been up to the task to deal with that problem. They are not seizing the moment. They are not seizing the moment. So when you go to the polls on November third, if you're early vote, are you sitting in that ballot, you have to understand the velocity and the seriousness of this moment. If the person that you are electing is not up for the task, if you haven't seen him, if they have not been at the scene of a crime to console the families, or even stop by out there to just say, hi, my name is so-and-so, and I'm your representative, what can I do for you? You have to think at the polls, what have they done for you? Is it worthy of your vote?
Yes, ma'am. Can you say your question again one more time?
My question was concerning the, um, the violence and the criminal acts that has taken place in the city of Petersburg in the last few years. What are your desires, or what are your plans, or any ideas, or what you could do to help change, um, those situations?
First thing, policy. The city is never- The city is negligent on all of its policies and every department. I recently, um, exposed a policy situation within the police department. And it was quickly rectified. I knew policies that weren't signed since Chief Dixon was here. And I was looking for the policy on the, uh, no chokehold. And I discovered all the policies. When I discovered it, uh, it was taken as an attack, but it wasn't an attack at all. It was, hey, fix it. Fix it now. Because you're putting the office in danger and you're putting the community in danger. Now, as far as the murders and stuff in the city, everything that's going on in this city right now has a direct effect on the murders. The blight, these kids gotta get on the school bus and ride past hell to go to school. And they get that same hell that they see broken down houses and homes and, and, and no malls, no stores, stuff that they know that they should have. And they give these teachers hell. The teachers coming down with P E or lunch, whatever, good education, then they come back on the bus, ride past hell again. They put hell in the community. There's no love to any of the people because there's no love for the people.
Right.
You know? That's what the, that's what the problem is. You know, murder and death has become the order of the day in Petersburg. That's, that's the order of the day. This unfortunate thing is, our leaders ignore this. And whether it's death, and whether it's better than death, you have vultures. And as long as we keep dying as a community, the vultures are gonna continue to eat. Our issue is what we have to do as a team, us and you guys, everybody. We gotta stop dying. We gotta stop dying effectively with the policies. These policies are dead. The people are dying. And they're gonna continue to die. There's no love in the people because there's no love for the people. When we're talking about the guns, I said I was thirteen years old when I was a father, but I'm fourteen. I've had so many guns in my possession. I've had choices that I had to make. Now, I'm gonna be honest with you. You can provide all you want to provide to a lot of these kids, they still gotta make a choice themselves. If anybody can talk about that, I can talk about it. Because I gave these kids in this community football, basketball, community bad, R T C, and then boxing. And some of them chose to go and be silver glove champions and dream Olympians. And some of them, the same opportunity, chose to stay out there.
Right.
So we gotta change that frequency in all of them. In order to change that frequency, it requires motivation. We have to keep motivating these kids because what happened with me as a young dad at thirteen, it was motivation. And that motivation came from some elderly people always pouring positive seeds into me. And we never had a self doubt as a young father coming up. Something that somebody said to me started growing. Say, you're better than this. You're better than that. You're gonna be somebody. We gotta keep pouring that. We gotta keep changing that frequency until we get these kids on the right station. But we gotta understand that some of them are gonna stay at this lower frequency. But we gotta try to reach them. We can't stop. A lot of people think you take the hands off your child at eighteen. That's the worst time to take the hands off your child. You got to stay on them kids. That's when life really hits, you know? Life really hits them at that time. You can't stop. They're not ready. This murder in this city is a direct effect. It's, it's, it's a direct group from what we're doing as a leadership team, as parents, as community people. Stop walking past the kids and, and, and without telling them something positive. Give them a positive word. That's more than money. These elderly people ain't giving me no money. But they poured something in me that I needed when it was time for it to be needed. And that's what I am right now. I'm a mix of everybody that's saying something positive to me, right to this day, right to this day. But to change this stuff, we got to attack these policies. All the policies in every department need to be reviewed and revamped and brought to the community. They're a part of it. The policies is for them. You know? We can't, we can't, we can no longer vote on stuff than tell you about it and say, oh, this one we voted on. And this, this one we did in the last four years. And we ain't know anything about it as constituents, constituents. You know? Tell them first. Include them. Reactivate the citizens at this committee, you know? That, that right there will keep your officers honest, you know? Uh, not just your officers, but your city leaders as well, you know? Reactivate it, man. You know, but that's what we have to do with these policies. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you so much. That was one of my major, um, questions concerning, and now I'm gonna turn it over to some of the other, um, people here in the community that may have a question or want to talk. Ms. Talbot, Bishop Lane.
Good, um, good afternoon, everybody. Thank you, young man.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much because you all bring me energy. And so we got something cooking in the pot, man. You know? You bring me energy, so I thank you so much. One, two things I wanna say, and I do have a question regarding the signs. You should have expected that to happen. I mean, really. Do you know anything about candidacy, our political campaigns and stuff? That's gonna happen. But you should have a strategy in place. One sign is removed, I got another one coming. Or the other strategy would be, then I got a door knocker. Because once that sign is removed, I'm gonna send out a store, put a door knocker up. Who gonna remove that? So the strategy has to be in place. It's not about the sign. Because you can place that, go knock on the door, the next strategy, then the next month, the next strategy. Always have a strategy. You know anything about carelessness, eh, you have to have strategy. Do you think I'm gonna worry about it because you took a sign? I'm glad you got it. Keep it for a souvenir. Okay? Whatever. But always have a strategy in place to block anything that's gonna happen. Because you got to know that it's gonna happen. And guess what? It's okay. Because whatever you do to me, I already got a backup plan. Always have a backup, backup plan. Regarding the balance, I agree with you. If there's no love at the top and the message is saying either, either consciously or subconsciously, we don't care, you better believe it's gonna manifest in the physical on the streets. We have to understand how powerful that is and the sublime messages that the leadership gives this city of Petersburg, which is, we don't care. Because after all, we don't care to the point, y'all are not even good enough for us to hire in those strategic positions. We're hearing from people outside of Petersburg making decisions about Petersburg. How dare you, leadership? And we have to understand that. So we got to change that now to very quick. And that's why I hope people go out and vote and change it. We can write that with a click. You know, people need to understand their power. And our ancestors did not go through what they went through for us to say, some of us saying, oh, I don't, I'm not gonna vote. You better get whatever piece of motivation you got. You better make it to that poll. And that's the message you all gotta send out as well. Regarding, um, children not having things to do, they have things to do. Petersburg had a lot of activities for, for kids. I'm telling you, I've been here long enough. They shut down. You know why? Number one, parent participation. Parents will come and argue or whatnot. Number two, children stop participating, especially when social media got involved. So that opinion about children don't have anything to do, they have a lot to do. But just like Marlo said, what are your choices? So now we have to teach children, parents, and everybody to think, uh, critical thinking skills to not just talk about, think about what's gonna happen today, but we have to have longevity. What about planning for the future? If you don't have a plan for the future and you already saying in your music and everything else that you gonna die, like, okay, well, we gonna help you die. So there's a lot of stuff going on with balance and whatnot. And I think that we could really help by showing the love. And it has to start at the, at the top. My question, what is your vision for this city? What is your ultimate vision? Because you got to have a vision in order to come up with a plan and a strategy. Your vision is gonna determine what you do. What is your vision for this?
My vision for the people and for this city, it's not just my vision alone. It's collective thought of all the people. We have to provide opportunities for everybody. And one of the things we were talking about was the, um, schooling, you know, the trade schools. One of the things we need to do is include the kids and make sure they have a trade school and, and encourage them to be entrepreneurs. You know, I recently lost my job in like two thousand and fourteen, fifteen, something like that. And what was it?
Sixteen.
It's two thousand sixteen. Because I put a ring under the bridge now, you know? And when I lost, at that moment, you know, I was somewhat of an entrepreneur, just trying this and that. But that was a really trying time for me. I lost everything. My community center, almost my home, I mean, everything. Always to zero. And I call that going through the fire. And I was blessed with a cooking opportunity, you know? And, and there was an old man across the street who could have gave me some money, said, you know, see for your family, going on in, um, sorry for your troubles, good luck. And he taught me how to cook those delicious ribs that y'all be eating, you know? And I named the business after him. Of course, I wanted to get what I supposed to get for my business, this license. And I'm saying all this to say, one program that, that needs to happen is with that trade school that we talked about. The city collectively can waive just that small business license fee for the kids that's, that's coming out of a trade school, you know? And help them get on their feet running to becoming their own business, their own, uh, working for themselves. That's a certain freedom that you can't get anywhere, you know? Because the freedom that I have with O G Ribs and Barbecue, I could leave my job right now if I wanted to, you know? But God put that in place just in case somebody else is gonna act up, you know? And so, so a trade school is one of the things. Another thing, man, is the seniors, you know? We have to include them as well, you know? That vision, my vision, I'm gonna be there for you just, our vision. We have to collectively have a vision from the citizens, from the constituents. And that vision need to be passed down to whoever we hire city manager. We need to tell that city manager, this is the vision of the city. This is where we want them to go. This is where we want our city to go. And that city manager needs to rule or lead in that direction.
That's right.
What's happening now, we don't have a vision. We don't have a vision or a vision statement, you know, or mission statement. So city council loved that. And they take that, they take that opportunity and they hire anybody from the outside and give them a free check. And then that person come in and hire who they want to. So they, they only using that vision of what they have, you know? So, so now you got the people in the department who learn the system and know there's no vision. So they're gonna continue feeding up lies to whoever the city manager is. You notice every city manager we had the past three has been tra- tra- uh, treated the same way. So they feed up lies from the bottom, they take the lies to the city council, city council vote on lies. And we never hear the lies until the last thing I hear them out at the council meeting, you know? But then they go back there and they have a, uh, closed session, a lie session, you know? But we have to have vision from the people. And not just a vision, a mission statement. And that mission statement is more, more motivating because we have to have something to drive that vision.
Right.
You know, so, so the vision got to start from the people. And that needed to be a survey going out. But, uh, but we need to put together a vision statement. There was a training that I took before, and we all had to put together a vision statement for a new fire department, you know? And it don't have to be in five paragraphs. It could be in one, it could be in two sentences. But it gotta be something that motivates the people.
Right.
To want change.
I'm sorry, what was your name again?
My name is Rashida Farid.
Rashida Farid?
Yeah.
You asked a good question. And you know, uh, Ms. Farid, my vision is for Petersburg that is a destination location where everyone can visit, live, work. That can happen. You know, it's like Marlo said, just, just stealing, not really stealing, but you know, further discussing his idea about having a city that has a mission and vision statement and, and performed by that, with really ethical standards. Ethical standards that they are held to. I think that's how we get there. I think that, and to give you some personal perspective, I went to a high school, Phoebus High School in Hampton, Virginia. It was a technology school. You went to Phoebus?
No.
Oh, you, did you go to Hampton Roads? Okay. Okay. So Phoebus does have the best football program in the state. I'll just say that. But I was never on the team. But I went to games. So I digress. So the thing is this, I went to high school, I went to a technology high school, and in that high school, I took Cisco networking classes. They offered Java programming, uh, technology courses where you could graduate and automatically get a job working remotely from home. Making upwards to six figures a year. You didn't need a college degree, you didn't need vocational training. We had the, the shipyard across the water where you could go to trade school and have a trade. So we have to bring that back. To get there, you have to have infrastructure that can support and sustain economic development. You have to have representation that listens and creates action. You have to really have school systems that are accredited, that you have representation on the school board side, as well as the city council side, as well as the Petersburg Housing Authority, all working in tandem and talking together. We can't do anything without working together as a city to see that happen. And every single, every single citizen is a part of that process. Truly a part of that process. We can get there. You know, when I purchased my home and this entire time of going back and looking at houses, I was always looking at a tablet or a computer or, as you may notice, I write notes or looking at my notes as we're riding up. So the day we actually closed up the house and we're pulling up on the exit, I'm like, what is that? And the real estate agent, my spouse, and a friend that was with us was like, you haven't seen that hotel all this time we've been around and gone? I'm like, that's true. That was the reality. That pulling up into Petersburg was not the equivalent of Disneyland. It was not. So continuously seeing these problems and talking to people, we've come up with the solution, um, that it can happen. But we just have to have every stakeholder involved. We cannot sit in a silo and close meetings, having discussions about the future of the city without involving people, without involving nonprofits, without involving businesses, without involving parents and teachers again. But it, it, it comes down to the fact that as a representative, you have to set the bar. And my goal is to set it high, to have parents engaged in their children's education and their well-being. And we're seeing that now from them having to be held accountable for their children's academic performance. But we need to continue that conversation and role, continue to roll and, and see them be involved. It's about even at a child level, creating the needs assessment for them, asking them, what do you wanna see? Do you wanna see a place where you can play video games or rent video games or engage your friends in that capacity? Let's invest in that. At least it's getting you off the street. Do you want a certain sport that we didn't invest in? Let's invest in that. But again, when we look at the future of our kids, we have to, we have to play smart. And I'm sorry to pull race to the matter, but we have to play the same as our counterparts who are not of color. It's about investing in, in swimming, rowing, lacrosse, all of these sports that really see our children, especially children of color, having opportunity to get scholarships and go to school for free and get a good education. We have to prepare our schools to be able to sustain our kids going to an Ivy League school, to a military service academy and succeeding. That's what that's about. We have to prepare them mentally to deal with the stresses of culture shock of being somewhere else where they've never, where they, they see green grass. They see police. They don't hear gunshots. That's a culture shock.
It is.
We have to prepare our children for that. But it's about asking them what they need, not assuming. The same for our elders and the same as our working, our, our working class. What do you need? Not assuming. But it takes leadership that's willing to get out and knock on every single door until we get that answer. We're in the middle of a pandemic and not, not one council member up until Labor Day weekend had the gall to knock on a door and see how their neighbors are doing. To distribute P E E expedition appropriately. No keep track of where it was at. Meanwhile, that could be utilized for future grant funding because you've shown that you're able to do that successfully. The fact that our council members are in our administration is not thinking about the bigger picture shows you your worth. Because they have no vision.
There you go.
All three of us today have talked about so much, and we talked about vision. Again, I can't stress this to them, when you go to the polls and you talk to your friends and family, you must engage them on vision. They can come out now and talk about every single thing they plan on doing for Petersburg. Technology, working with school board. Black Lives Matter. Let's talk about Black Lives Matter. If Black Lives truly mattered and you were out there in that bridge marching, why didn't you come back to a city council meeting and attest and talk about the fact that Black Lives matter? Did you show it in your policy and legislative decisions that you made for this city? Let's talk about Black Lives Matter.
Talk about it.
Let's have a conversation about that. We don't see that from our leadership.
They do it in colonial heights.
And they can even do it in colonial heights, but we can't even as a black majority community address the fact that Black Lives Matter in our city, we don't even see it from our leadership. That should tell you enough. Should I speak even more? No, I'm done.
That I think is going down the line.
Oh, I thought, oh, I'm sorry, y'all hadn't even spoke, go ahead.
To answer her question.
Yeah, we, we here answering her question. First of all, when I said the kids don't have nothing to do, um, and we talk about yard sign, everything I do in life is to teach, I'm a marketing guy, that's what I do. First of all, if we're gonna tell ourselves, oh, we want leadership to be this, 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 then the people that are running, that's sitting in that leadership position should already have a standard already before you do move office. So if you're still in science, that's a standard. That means that you are doing low-down things, doesn't make sense. How you wanna tell me you can lead us and you're doing small things that don't make sense now? Those are the reasons why I say stuff, I say it's to teach. If you're gonna play the role of us being a certain high standard, why does it begin when we get in office? Why don't it begin before we get in office? That's the part of why I'm doing that part. Now, as for the vision, Petersburg need more culture here. Meanwhile, what does it, okay, one of the things I wanted to bring here, which is also part of my platform, is I wanted to bring a dog park. Some people say, why don't you wanna bring a dog park, cuz there's a lot of people who have dogs here.
That's right.
Either we're gonna have a dog park or all of Petersburg become a dog park, you decide. Does that make sense what I'm saying? Now, what would Dog Park do for us? For people that come to the restaurants, whether for, for any part of Petersburg, you can drop your dog off. And I had a company that was willing to put that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars up. People wanna say, what's the vision? We need money. We could dance around everything we wanna dance around, we need money in Petersburg. There's a lot of empty homes in, in Warford and everywhere else. Petersburg is beautiful. To me, I think Petersburg, I don't know if anybody ever been to New York, but Petersburg remind me of a southern version of Soulho. I don't know if you've ever been to the artsy, east, east village, east side of, uh, uh, that's what Petersburg remind me of. It's very artsy, it's a lot of things, I didn't Obama, Dr. King hung out. We have a rich history in Petersburg. Everything meets here, eighty-five, ninety-five, two ninety-five, right? This Dixie line, everybody know Virginia begins the Dixie line, am I correct? So all this is going on in Petersburg, why is it not everybody, when they wanna eat and do things, they run to Colonial Heights? Why we not coming back from across the bridge? I'm trying to change it where, you wanna talk vision, stop going across the bridge for entertainment. We can entertain you right here. You can eat our food right here. You can go to our museums right here. We can do our tourism right here, we need a hotel right here. Do you know I was gonna get Queen Latifah to cut the ribbon for us at the Dog Park? The first time the city for a dog was for Queen Latifah. Man, same thing I told Latifah, I said, Latifah, at the same time, I need you to come see this hotel. Of course, my advocate, I'm not calling advocate, my opponent, at the time that's made me run, my opponent said, oh, we don't need a Dog Park. I said, but you know, we can get Queen Latifah there, that's gonna be news. And that news would have led for her to look at the hotel. I don't need her to spend no money, she's Queen Latifah, all she gotta do is attach her name to the hotel. We had all the investment in the world we need. Do you understand what I'm saying? So I've been in entertainment business since ninety-three. I have all these celebrity friends that are personal friends of mine. I'm planning on using them and saying, look, could you show your face for this? Can we get a budget to get you over here to do this for us? So we can get on the news, cuz we be talking about Petersburg all day long, but we gonna keep talking about Petersburg in a bad light. Why would someone wanna be here? Do you know the first time I came to move out here in two thousand and nine? The first thing I heard, don't go to Petersburg. The first time I moved to Colonial Heights, the first word someone told me, do not go to Petersburg. You know the first place I went and got lost? Petersburg. Do you understand what I'm saying to you? So if people tell you, don't come to Petersburg, that's a vision we gotta change. Does that make sense? We need people to start saying, they comfortable to be here. Gunshots is everywhere, ain't just Petersburg. So it's not used as excuse. But if you want vision, we need more culture. We need a reason for somebody being in Petersburg. We have a reason, we need a reason for people to live in Petersburg. All these beautiful homes in Petersburg, all these empty homes, without a tax revenue, we have no vision. Do you play the role, oh, we need this, we need, what we need is more money here. And the only way we gonna get more money, we gotta get people, and gotta entice people to wanna live here. If we entice people to live here, we got something. And why can't this be the southern version of Soulho? So by the time you get deep down south, the first thing you always remember, man, I went to Petersburg and had a ball. You know I've been in Petersburg, you know, um, President Obama was in Petersburg, he ate at Long Street? Do you know Dr. King hung out in Petersburg? Why we can't use those factors to make people wanna be in Petersburg? Again, vision for me is culture.
Thank you very much for the question. So my vision for Petersburg is unity through community. We all must unite for a better Petersburg. Now, my next major concern thing I wanna push forward, I wanna make sure that our students are graduating from Petersburg Public High School with an associate's degree. I wanna make sure that we are attracting the infrastructure and the businesses to Petersburg. Do you know Petersburg is a one day's drive to over fifty percent of the U.S. population? There's no reason that we are not a logistic hub. The U.S. Army positioned Fort Lee here, right outside of Petersburg because of our logistic and strategic location here on the east coast. Other companies are starting to realize this. But for us to be successful, sometimes we do have to go outside of Petersburg. Sometimes we do have to push for things to, uh, grow. And Dinwood, right here, we have the airport. We should be pushing with our elected officials in Richmond for that airport to become a freight port where we are having companies from all over the world bringing their product here to Petersburg to be then distributed amongst the people of the east coast. We are ones that they strive to fifty, uh, fifty-one percent, actually, fifty-one percent of the U.S. population. There's no reason that Petersburg is not successful. Well, I mean, there is a reason, our education, our crime, we have some of the highest taxes here in the Commonwealth of Virginia. So one of the things that I envision is that we start to look at incentives for businesses to come back to Petersburg. We have the Tidmouth, um, optical plant here in Petersburg. Wouldn't it be great if we could bring an industry back into the heart of West Petersburg instead of selling it to someone for ten dollars? Wouldn't it be great if we could bring a business back into the former Roper Lumber Yard site? We have so much potential here in Petersburg. Yet, we do not have leaders who have vision, we do not have people who are shooting for the stars. We need that here in Petersburg. Currently, our, our motto, I guess, is, you know, we're at the dawn of a new day. You know, Petersburg is moving forward into the future. But if we do not have leaders that have a vision of unity, uh, through community, we do not have leaders that actually want our students to have the ability to graduate from high school with an associate's degree. We have leaders who are going to stop progress. You know, um, Peabody, they actually were going to try to turn that into a tech school, our vocational school. And the city was trying to charge them half a million dollars a year to rent it. Are they trying to stop progress? Now, I mean, really think about that. I mean, you have a group of people, you know, big names too, wanting to come into Petersburg and change the lives of every single citizen here in Petersburg, and you have a city administration that stops it? Another thing that, you know, is mind-boggling for me, we had a conservation group come in when the city of Petersburg was broke, and they wanted to give us half a million dollars to put a permanent easement, easement on, um, Petersburg Legends, uh, historical nature sanctuary? I'm sorry, it's a long name, so Petersburg Legends Park. And the city of Petersburg denied it. They said, no, we might wanna develop that park one day. One day they might develop it, you know, Chapparal Steel is looking at expanding in that area. So, I mean, I would be really concerned about big corporations coming into Petersburg and looking at our natural resources, we have to protect our public assets. We cannot continue to let our public assets fall into the ground, we cannot give our public assets away. This is my vision for Petersburg, a city with people who care, people who are united through the community, and people who can see the prosperity and economic opportunity here in Petersburg. City leaders who can draft and craft new policy to bring companies into Petersburg, to bring funding to our public school systems, to bring the people of the Commonwealth to Petersburg. And I believe also high-speed rail is going to be a major factor in making Petersburg a better community to live in.
We have this gentleman next.
I'm a taxpayer, I live in this city, I'm from this city. The question was asked, you get long drawn-out answers and you hit around the question. And I'm not saying that to, as a way of putting you down, I'm saying it to bring you into awareness. Um, when you mentioned Webster, is that Webster Court that you're talking about? Mister, what, the gentleman with the hat?
Sam.
Oh, yeah. You mentioned. That's Webster Court? And you, you, you defined that as a housing project here? I never knew that, I lived there and I never knew that that was a housing project. So, no, wait a minute, no, no, no. So, in this city, that's always been an apartment complex, same as Petersburg East. They were popular complexes, Pin Oaks, uh, uh, and, um, and PK Niggas, they were always the project. There's a distinction. And Tidmouth, Tidmouth is in Fifth Ward, I grew up on Hen Street, that's Fifth Ward. West Petersburg, no, 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 I'm from Petersburg, I'm from Petersburg. That's Fifth Ward, you don't understand.
Yes.
You don't understand, that's Fifth Ward. West Petersburg is in Dinwood, I'm from Petersburg. Perception means everything. You gotta understand what you say and how you say it is impacted by, uh, uh, how, uh, resonate in people. If I lived in your ward, I might vote for you. I have a conversation about a lot of things you do and say, but I might vote for you, I, I like you. The gentleman on there, he know I'm talking about. Um, and I gotta go, but out of all of this, I never heard social services, I never heard unemployment, I never heard workforce development. And you know what? Workforce development is a huge agency with millions of dollars that the city took over and nobody mentioned it. You talk about stopping crime, everything else, you, you never mentioned it. How many cases are there at social services? Please give me an answer, if you. Seventeen thousand, some of them maybe duplicate. Did you hear me? Seventeen thousand? Exactly. You got a vision, you got a vision, you gave, uh, uh, metrics, you got a vision, but you didn't comment on it. Those are the things you gotta know if you're gonna, uh, change this city. Cuz if you don't know those things, you're gonna behave just like what we have now. You may not intend to, and those people, I can't say that they're bad people, I disagree with a lot of decisions that they make. But I'm saying to you, really understand what this city is and the, uh, uh, what you need to do to change it. Petersburg needs to be a service industry. This is the hub to eighty-five. You cannot go to New York or Florida without driving past Petersburg. We got, uh, uh, Petersburg High School has a vocational program. They just don't support it enough. Wesley does, when somebody suggested about the entrepreneur approach, uh, entrepreneurial program. They already does that. A lot of the things that you guys are talking about are already in the city, they just don't get a lot of support. So I say the few things that I've said because I want you guys to hear what I think about this city. Because if you get, become a councilman, I'm gonna look at you and I'm gonna say, I was there when you took and said it, what you said, and I heard what you said, and I'm gonna remind what you said when you said it, about what you said. This is my city, I love this city. I hope you guys become councilmen, you really understand. Health, uh, social services, workforce development, unemployment, and education are the foundation to making any change in this city. Part of the reason why a lot of individuals are not hired to work for a city council is because we have seventeen thousand cases at social services. We have low-educated individuals in this city. They're not bad people, they're just victims of their circumstances. So you gotta understand those things and address those things to make any change in this city. I wanna say something to this gentleman right here, he's not running yet. I don't know you, but I seen you online, I wish you was running. I wish you was running. Um, I digress. Um, but gentleman, I respect you for doing what you're doing, what you, what you're trying to do. Um, and if you become a city council member, please think about the things that are social services, workforce development, education, health. All of those things are tied together. You could invite a company right now who would say that they would drop twelve hundred jobs in the center of Petersburg if you break the workforce. Thank you.
First of all, I need to apologize to the crowd. And the reason I'm apologizing, cuz a lot of times, I'm a funny guy, I don't let my right hand know and my left hand don't. But when you say social service, my family has two licensed programs here, my sister's an LPC. We deal with social service, we deal with, uh, mental health, and a whole bunch of stuff out here already. I created jobs in Petersburg already, cuz I started a company with my sister that does all of it. Now, that being said, hiring people in Petersburg and the surrounding area, our company been, and you can look this up if you want, it's Welcome Home Community Service, we've been in business for about four years. This is part of me that I don't speak about, creating jobs already before I even got, even called myself ever running for anything. See, a lot of time when people speak, they just speaking from just speaking. I'm not speaking from just speaking, I'm speaking from experience. I'm speaking from also things I've already done in the city. I'm just not one of the types that gonna sit here and broadcast, oh my God, I did this, I did that in the city, this is what I do, I'm in the hood, I do this, I do that, I also started a company here, blah, blah, we feed families here and all that. I'm not gonna do all that. I'm not gonna sit there and tell you, go all the city, city, home, there's not one, if you was to ask them, how, did I have this guy, anybody has taken you to the store? If you call my, my, my Petersburg, uh, grandmothers' mothers, grandfather's fathers, call my phone, have no problem with me saying, stop them what I'm doing, including this conversation we having now, they need me taking them to the store. This is stuff that I do without, without even speaking about mother. Ma'am, can you say, cuz if you tell us.
I'ma cut it, I'ma cut it, because once we been here long, we've been here for quite a long time. And, um, I'm, I have to, I'm standing with this gentleman because before he stood there, I told all of you guys that there were certain things I was specifically looking for. And balance was one, social service. Um, the workforce, with no jobs, there's no change. The social service, I listened to Marlo, thirteen years old, he was a father. There's a lot of them in the city of Petersburg. Um, if I'm not mistaken, eighty-five percent of our people in this community is getting assistance. I own a business and I've hired, I think I got about ten staff that works for me every day. So we understand the importance of having a job, but I'm just a small business. What are we doing about bringing revenue, major businesses, how, what, what to come into this city that's going to give them something to look forward to other than Amazon? Who is outside of the city but working the people like a dog? I got parents dropping children off that just got home at four A.M. That's not able to spend quality time with their children because they went to work at that morning, didn't get off to four o'clock the next day, having seen their two and three children because of where they having to go to work at. I say social service because as thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen-year-olds that are pregnant, have no guidance, no parenting classes, no anything, now, they exist. You're right, they exist. But we as a city is not focusing on. But we as a city is not focusing on the things that will help grow them and mature them. You put them on food stamps, you give them a little bit of housing, you throw them in the projects, and you expect to leave them there. If you receive anything from the social service, they should be mandated to do some type of work program during the day if they're not working. Where are the trained education programs for us to get our children off of the mindset, it's poverty, it's all like nothing? And I'm gonna let, I'ma let you say that, but I have to say this because, um, this is not a joke for me. This is a, this is a fight, I fight every day. And I see the insides and the outsides of every single person in this city of Petersburg that's struggling. So before you started beating the streets, I was in the streets with them too. And I didn't just show up at death calls, but I was in homes to where porches were so corroded that you can't even step in a person's house because of their living conditions. So, we didn't talk about a whole lot of things. This is a city, do you know what we, we best at? It's feeding vote. That's what we good at. We, we, it, it's, it's a mindset, you think because you give somebody a slice of bread and a piece of bologna, and they go to bed tonight with a little food on their belly, and tomorrow only to wake up in the same state and same condition? I don't need you to keep feeding our people because the truth of the matter is feed more, do it every day. So I'm just saying this, I brought this to the table, and I said this, and I know it, we've been here a while. We, we have been, we've been here for a long time, and I listen to people keep going on and on and on, and you're saying the same, you're saying what I've been saying and I ain't even answered. Because I said this in the beginning, what did I say, gentlemen, in the beginning? Then don't look at what the problem is in the city and start feeling some kind of way about incompetent people that may be in position now. What are you gonna do to take this dead situation and bring it to life?
Talk about it.
That's what I'm here for. And the dead situation is taking some thirteen, twelve-year-old, fourteen-year-old, not just giving them a slice of bread and a piece of bologna, but giving them hope to grow from the condition that they sit in. That's what I'm looking for as my city council. That's what I want out of office, that's what I want in office. So if you gonna be it, I'ma need you to stop talking about the, and the, what the, uh, we should do, and give me a plan. I want a plan. I want a workforce. Social service is toe up from the floor up. And if you got seventy-seven percent of people that's in this city that's on social service, do you imagine what their thought pattern is? Can you imagine? Then if all they saw were mama and granddaddy, and everybody, uncles and cousins, living off the system, that got to be me too?
It reinforces it.
So that's why I just said that, please forgive me, but I'm almost like Marcus, I got a little passionate about this.
Can I, can I say something?
Yes, sir.
Somebody mentioned about a school drive. And I watched this, and if you're a councilman, but I want you to consider bringing people together. I watched this one, it's about five and six different organizations did the same thing. One had, one had a mission of five thousand book bags. Okay? It's only thirty-two hundred students in the system. You got five organizations doing the same thing? Can you imagine how, how many, uh, book bags, packs of pa- uh, paper, pencils, pens that's left over?
Well, not to mention Tim, that we're moving into a paperless twenty-first century technology.
Right.
And we're, and we're still worried about how many, you know, packets of notebook papers.
Right.
It's that, I have.
Cause that's grand money people receive.
It's, it's the mindset that, that I'm talking about, you reinforcing, well, it reinforces something that's becoming antiquated. Instead of doing bookbag drives, why not do Chromebook drives?
Yeah, exactly.
Why not get those, you gentlemen, if you're on council, why not get those organizations together? Say, do what you do, let's come together at the end, put this money together and begin to buy laptops, Chromebooks, hotspots.
But I, but I really appreciate your question, and the thing is, is that, you're right, social services does not get the attention that we need. They don't get the funding, and we have gone to doors and have met people who were social workers in the city of Petersburg, and they've gone and did it with you, they've gone to Prince George, they've gone to other places because.
They need more money.
More money and more attention and.
Let me say this, I'm sorry, but I wanna, I wanna say it. Those people who work in social service, they do have a difficult job. I don't want anybody to think that, I believe that people in the social service are lazy. They have a difficult job, they are humans just like us.
It is, but it's, it's just the same with our building and collections office, because in my experience, and I can only use an ice cream in this, everybody that I've come across has been nice. However, the technology is antiquated, they don't have an answer because there is no answer, and at the end of the day, they are afraid to go up the chain of command and to talk about the issues because they feel like they're, they're gonna be hit and deemed for bringing an issue to light. I went eight months without a water bill, and every week, I went up and said, can I get a water bill? Can I get a water bill? I gotta wait this in the room, can I get a water bill? Eight months, and finally in January, I was told, you'll get it when you get it. Got a bill in March for, I think the first amount, like seventy-seven dollars, I got on the phone and called, and I spoke to, I think Ken or Kevin or Kyle, and he was like, well, you used the bill, don't you expect to pay for it all? I said, no, cause I did my due diligence every single day to come up here and get my bill on time. You dropped the ball, my, my time coming up to city council is time and effort. That means something. So again, it's, I, I completely understand that this issue is, when you get down to it, is that you have too many cooks in the kitchen ma- making too much money, that needs to be disseminated back down to these organizations that are doing the work, people that understand that they are, they're already, we don't have to recreate the wheel. The wheel just needs to, some attention. A new rim, maybe a, a tire plugged. Again, there, we have the resources here, we have to invest in it. We have to invest in technological advancements. It's just not our building and collections office that is seeing the need to, to have advanced technology. We know that we, there was workforce, my goal, this is it, my goal as a council member is to ensure that when we do get a Fortune 500 company coming into the city, we have the workforce available. And to fight to ensure that we get a set amount of people prioritizing the city of Petersburg that have jobs. It's not about sitting here and going, yeah, you're gonna bring twelve thousand dol- twelve thousand jobs into the city of Petersburg, but again, if you don't have the workforce to sustain, they're gonna go out and get it from somewhere else. So we have to, at this time, at this juncture, the next four years and beyond is going to be preparing our city to, to sustain that, to sustain businesses coming in, to sustain our children, um, again, wanting the vocational training and the technology training. Again, it's about building the foundation and, and really just investing in it. And I know that we, we talked superficially tonight or this evening about these things, but it really is about valuing the work that our people are doing. It takes a long time to get a social worker's degree. It takes a lot of effort, it takes a lot of time, it takes a lot of sacrifice. We should be investing in that. You know a bus driver in the city, the lowest that they're getting paid is twenty-nine thousand dollars? We have, we have custodial workers working part-time in the middle of a pandemic, only making nine dollars an hour. That is ridiculous, it's sick. It's about bringing equity and equality and pay back to the city to working families. Now, how do you do that? You come from the top. You don't need in a city of thirty-three thousand four deputy city managers. You don't need a city manager to make a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. You don't need three executive assistants, that's where the solution is. But it's about bringing grant writers into those positions to write grants, being able to monitor those grants. Again, you had a city council member who swore up and down that she brought a hundred and eighty thousand dollars worth of grants into the city, but yet in the past four years, you have not seen her volunteer not one moment to write a review of grants that went out on behalf of the city of Petersburg. That's what we're dealing with. There's solutions, but look, I'm not afraid to talk about it. Heads are gonna have to roll. People are gonna have to lose their jobs. It is a tough situation, but the people on the bottom that are doing the work should not have to sacrifice and lose their jobs when the people on the top are making five, six times more than the average person in the city. It's sick. It's sick. It's sick that a social worker is only making thirty-seven thousand dollars, working overtime, going to houses, being in deplorable situations, and, and having that emotional toll put on them, and we're not investing in them. It's sad that we have, we're in the middle of COVID, and we're not investing in improvements to our infrastructure. No countermeasures to, to approach COVID nineteen. It's deplorable, I mean, it's about really sitting down and investing. And we, there's multiple ways to do that. There's multiple ways to bring people and organizations into the city of Petersburg, but until you get rid of the nepotism, the backdoor dealing, until you create ethical standards and processes to be able to sustain fair and equitable re- request for funding proposals, fair and equitable processes to purchase property at ten dollars, we're not gonna get anywhere. The work starts when we get on council. Look, I, I'd love to talk to you offline about it, I mean, I just think that, again, this is why we have to have people in the room like you to challenge us and to tell us that we don't know everything. But in regards, one of the things you mentioned about Ward Five and Six. The thing is that we're experiencing in Ward Six is that people still think they're in Ward Five. And so on Election Day, they're going to Tabernacle, and they're getting turned away.
Yep. That's true.
When it comes down to it, they don't know where they're at. We had a discussion on Hinton Street with a woman who swore she was in Five, I had to show her the map and say, welcome to the family, you're in Six.
Yes.
Are you, is your voter registration updated? Yeah, so why are we going to the wrong polling place? It's about educating our community about where they're at, who your representative is. On the northern side of Ward Six Battersea, where the Titus Building is at, they haven't seen a representative in four years. And even though she's running for reelection, she hasn't even been up there. So what I'm saying is, I'm gonna, I'm gonna wrap up, it's about educating our community about where you're at, who your representatives are, the fact that you can get your rights restored, the fact that even right now in the middle of a pandemic, there is mortgage and rental assistance, and beyond that, there's a CDC moratorium that says that you cannot get kicked out of your house. And that's what it's about, that's what, that's what, that's what I'm doing. But again, it's, I would love to have you on our team. I mean, because we need every hand on deck to be able to make the change in this city.
Thank you, Patrick, thank you, Sam, thank you for everybody that helped respond to it. Sometimes we just got to stir up the.
Why are we not leveraging that and going to a Chesterfield county and say, we will have a specific group for your city which will bring jobs, cause we need more buses? Why do we not look at the development of our, of our workforce? Again, we cut Parks and Recreation's budget to zero. That meant no kids during the summer had a job. Why didn't we give them jobs mowing grass, beautifying our city, learning a trade on how to fix roads? Couldn't we give them basketball hoops up in the parks? Painting. Again, these may not be skills that they wanna take to a new job, but they're still important skills that you have to have as an adult. Why do we not have internships with the city of Petersburg? There's kids who may wanna be in public, um, service. Why are we not leveraging that and having them actually go through the bills in the, at the building and collections office and sorting them for the people to move board with them? Why are we not looking at creating cost-effective solutions that still give people jobs and opportunity and something to put on their resume? But when we look at the macro situation of bringing jobs in Petersburg, it's about having a team of people who are qualified and competent on bringing that business in. We have CDBG money, why are we not investing in that, in the infrastructure improvements? We're creating roads. How affectionate to have businesses up and down, and why are we not investigating, investing in small businesses? So there's so much more that we can do, but we have to understand that the administration's focus, it seems as if their mandate is on property management. Selling properties, holding properties, selling prop- no, it needs to be about bringing businesses into the city. We have to have a mandate, in my opinion, that in the next four years, our goal is to increase business by a reasonable percentage. We cannot see success until we have aggressive, aggressive metrics and goals to get there.
Thank you.
I hope I answered your question.
Thank you so much, Patrick. We wanna give Sam an opportunity.
Hold up, before I speak, you sure it's okay for me to speak? Cause every time I speak.
Uh, Marcus, I'm gonna give you, uh, you can take next. Um, uh, go ahead, what do you have to say?
All right, um. So you're not gonna let me speak, ma'am?
No, what I'm gonna say is, I'm not going to respond to sarcastic statements. Like I stated before, I'm not trying to cut anybody off.
You're not, I'm the only one you cut since we've been in this conversation.
That may be your feeling, that may be your feeling, but that's not done to me, that, I'm not doing that to you on purposely or trying to be, you know, like I don't wanna hear from Sam. I'm giving everybody that ample amount of time, when you, when it sounds like you getting ready to dwindle off, then I move on to the next person, as I stated before, we've been here since twelve. So, this is the stuff, I, I told, I, that's why I said, move on to Marcus. After Marcus, if you want to respond to the question, you can. But what we, we, what we will, we, what we will not do is be disrespectful.
I'm not being disrespectful, ma'am.
Yeah, but no, you, 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 you came after me if though you want me to.
Is it okay for me to speak?
If it was, I would have never asked you.
Yeah, so, no, no, hold up, let's stop for a second, ma'am. You, you, you invite me to come here, right? And you ask, you, first of all, if we're gonna come somewhere, let's all have a level of respect for each other. That's what's wrong with Petersburg now. You understand what I'm saying to you? Now, I watched, he was long-winded.